I call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, October 16, 2023. I would ask that you all please rise if you can for a brief invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we meet in what is turning out to be a very troubled world and the world that surrounds us, we are ever mindful that we are here to do what is in the best interest of the citizens of Batavia and to make our town a great and safe and pleasant place for our residents to live. We are ever thankful for the many blessings that have been showered on Batavia, and we appreciate all the good things that are happening in our town, from the quality of the school system to the redevelopment of the downtown, to the expansion of our industrial park and at Fermilab. We are very pleased that all this progressive activity is taking place in Batavia. Tonight, we just ask for direction and understanding by the members of the city councils as they act on the items of business before them, and we know that each and every one of them is here to do what in their own minds are in the best interest of Batavia and its future. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman, Malley, would you lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving to item three, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Miller. Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Piper.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Chanza. Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uwer.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
Vogelsinger.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Alderman Chanza is entering the meeting. So we have thirteen of fourteen, I believe, right? Okay. So we have the necessary form to conduct business. Moving then to item four, which is a reminder from myself, please use the microphone if you're going to address the council tonight because this is being recorded and will be played on TV, and without the microphone, it will be difficult for people watching on TV to hear you. Moving to item number five, which are items to be removed or changed on tonight's agenda. Do we have anything? Or we don't?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to have a brief presentation from Fermilab, and I'm going to show that as item nine A, so that we'll get them in and out of here relatively quick. No other changes on the agenda? Okay, present item number six of the consent agenda. Alderman Chanza, do you have this, please?
I do. Your honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. Approval is the October 13th, 2023 payroll in the amount of $992,687.42. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,768,791.79. To accept and place on file the building report, ordinance 23-46, amending the text of the zoning code, and approval of the 2024 meeting calendar. Your honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Chanza, second by Alderman Sulfah, for the approval of the items on the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Court, call the roll. Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Piper.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Chanza.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Motion to approve thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent. All right, moving then to item seven, matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Does anybody this evening wish to address this? Doesn't look like it. All right, now for some very nice things. We're going to move to item number eight, which is recognition of Bat for Brady event, and I've asked Alderman Lehman if she would read the proclamation.
A proclamation. Whereas on May 31st, 2023, a fateful incident occurred as Brady O'Neal left the Batavia Quarry en route to his baseball game when his bicycle was tragically struck by a car, resulting in severe injuries that necessitated extensive medical care, therapeutic treatment, and long-term support. And whereas Brady and his family are now faced with a challenging and uncertain journey toward recovery, with the extent and pace of his healing yet to be determined, reminding us all of the unpredictable and unforeseeable nature of life's events. And whereas the Batavia community stands united in support of young Brady O'Neal, acknowledging that no one should have to endure such a devastating event at such a tender age. And whereas the collective compassion and determination of the Batavia community are exemplified by the Friends of Brady O'Neal and Batavia Youth Baseball, who have joined forces to raise essential funds, awareness, and hope for Brady's ongoing struggle. And whereas an exemplary fundraising event, Bat for Brady, took place on October 1st, 2023, where the community came together and raised over $20,000, a testament to the generosity and solidarity that defined the people of Batavia. And whereas Brady O'Neal, accompanied by his devoted family, including his mother Laura O'Neal, his father Brian O'Neal, his sister Peyton, and his brother Dylan, graced the event with their presence, igniting a renewed sense of hope and inspiration. And now therefore, I, Jeffrey Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, do hereby proclaim our collective support and admiration for the extraordinary efforts of Bat for Brady and all those who have contributed to this noble cause. This proclamation is a testament to the unwavering spirit of unity and compassion that defines our community. I urge all residents of Batavia to continue supporting Brady and his family as they embark on their journey to recovery. Let this proclamation serve as a reminder that even in the face of adversity, the strength and resilience of our community shine brightly. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Batavia to be affixed the 16th of October in the year 2023. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor. Your Honor, I make a motion to present the proclamation as presented.
Second. Motion by Alderman Lehman, second by Alderman Vogelsinger, for the approval of the proclamation. Court, call the roll, please.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Piper.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Chanza.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Motion to approve thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent. Alderman Lehman, would you join me up here at the podium for a moment? Do we have somebody from the family come up, or does Brady want to come, or he wants to?
Do we also have the Bat for Brady organization come on?
What we need to do, we've got to get you on TV. You need to have your turn, that's why. So we get everybody on TV. You guys from Bat for Brady come in too. And I'm grateful, my great honor to present to you a copy of the proclamation that we just adopted. And certainly on behalf of the community, we want to express our admiration and our loving care for what you've been through, and great admiration for the great job that you've done and for what Brady has done. And Brady really needs to stand up, or not stand up, but take a bow for what he's really done here, to show the world that he's coming back very strong, and we're very, very proud of you. So I just wanted you to know that. And here's a picture copy of the proclamation. Aye.
In putting together the program and the fundraiser, it was really our pleasure, and thank you very much for letting us be involved.
Wonderful. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all.
All right, the next recognition is Art Educator of the Year Kathleen Terri Tom. And who's got this proclamation?
Your Honor, I do.
Alderman Chanza.
This is a recognition. The Illinois Art Education Association has honored Batavia High School with its prestigious School of Distinction Award for the second time, making it one of just three schools in the state to receive this recognition. This award underscores Batavia High School's commitment to delivering a top-tier art, design, and media education program. Batavia High School has excelled in curriculum, authentic learning, student showcase, community engagement, leadership, and professional development, significantly enriching the education and lives of its students. We proudly acknowledge Kathleen Terri Tom, an outstanding art educator at Batavia High School, who has earned the prestigious title of 2023 IAEA Secondary Art Educator of the Year. Her dedication to making art and design accessible to all students, supporting creative careers and fostering a welcoming school community is truly commendable. Kathleen's academic achievements reflect her unwavering commitment to her art and her students. Her passion for curriculum design, collaboration, and the role of the teacher has made her a leader in the field of art education. Under the leadership of Dr. Joanne Smith, Principal, and Tom Kim, Superintendent, Batavia High School has consistently demonstrated a commitment to excellence in art education. The IAEA also honored all art educators at Batavia High School, and they are proud to honor all art educators at the high school. Josh Cashbury, Jennifer Carpenter, Jennifer Melendez, Andrea Schindelbeck, and Terri Tom. Their efforts have created an environment that nurtures creativity, critical thinking, collaboration, and communication skills, resulting in improved student attendance, engagement, and academic performance. On behalf of the City of Batavia, I, Mayor Jeff Shelkey, extend our heartfelt congratulations to Kathleen Terri Tom and Batavia High School for their remarkable achievements and contributions to our education. We applaud their dedication to cultivating the talents and passions of our students and for their positive impact on our community. Your commitment to education serves as an inspiration to us all. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Batavia to be affixed on this 16th day of October, 2023, signed by Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the recognition as read.
Move by Alderman Chanza, second by Alderman Beck, I guess, for the approval of the proclamation. A court, please call the roll.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Piper.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Chanza.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uwer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Motion to approve thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent. Could I ask Kathleen if she would come forward, and Superintendent Kim, would you come up too, please? No, we're just, you have to be in the background for the picture.
One of my colleagues is here. Well, I'm.
Come on up, please. The more the merrier. Picture looks better. Superintendent, he takes the picture. He doesn't want to. So anyway, here, you've just heard it read, but here's an official signed copy. And I just want to say, as Mayor of Batavia, how proud we are that you earned this honor because, boy, did that send a very positive message about what's happening out on West Main Street in Batavia and all the talented people and all the talented instructors that we have at Batavia High School. You know, you ask people, why did you move to Batavia? Many of them always say, I want to get my family into the Batavia school system, and when you get honors like this, you really prove a fact, so congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you. Would you like to make any comments?
No, I think I'm good. Your Honor, I just want to highlight that Kathleen is incredibly invested in our community and was also part of the Flag Day Committee that the Chamber of Commerce did for the, or not Flag Day, but the Batavia Flag that was created, and also part of like the banners program that with Batavia Main Street and just connects Batavia High School students to the City of Batavia in all the different ways to get involved. So just very appreciative.
We've got to have you all stand here in a moment and take a picture.
You should take one with him, I hope.
Sounds good.
Yes. One with, because we've got two awards, one together and one just hers.
That's fine. That's fine. Okay.
Thanks, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, our next presentation is Fermi Accelerator Laboratory is here to share with us some exciting news, I guess, so.
Yes, sure. My name is Britta McKenna, and I am honored to serve on the Citizens Advisory Board, and I am one of a few Batavia representatives. I've been on the Citizens Advisory Board for maybe seven years or so. And first, I got to brag, if you don't get Cranes, Cranes, guess who was on the cover of Cranes last month, watching Fermilab? Okay, this is just like to whet your appetite on the grand, very large experiments going on on our eastern border there. But tonight, we're going to focus on Fermilab's site access. I know there's a lot of questions about like, how do I get back on, what's open? So one of the things we want to do is bring that information directly to you. So we have with us tonight Douglas Glinsinski. He is the Chief Project Officer at Fermilab, also Rebecca Thompson, and Kurt Rieselman, and Ray Moss. We have the Fermilab Quartet here, and they are here, hopefully among the four of them, they can answer your questions. So come on up, Douglas.
Thanks for having me. So I'm happy to be here to tell you about site access at Fermilab. Want to start by emphasizing that it's really important to us at Fermilab that we welcome not only the science community, but also our neighbors and the public to visit us at Fermilab so that we can share the excitement of the science that we do there. That's an important part of our mission. Now, there are rules and stuff that we need to keep in mind, and so this is just one slide that provides a little context for that. So we are one of seventeen national laboratories, so there's a number of federal regulations and Department of Energy requirements that we have to keep in mind. And there are a few things specific to Fermilab that also impact how we go about welcoming people to our site. So specifically, we operate the largest accelerator complex in the U.S., and that, of course, has some hazards associated with it. It's important to us that we operate that in a manner that's safe, not only for employees and our science users, but also for any of our visitors that come to the laboratory. We also have stewardship responsibilities for a number of physical, intellectual, and technical assets that affect, you know, how we go about implementing site access. And of course, the world's changed over the last few years. So just as one example of that, we have a significant increase in the number of cyber attacks that we experience at the laboratory. So we try to balance our desire to operate in a safe and secure manner with also wanting to welcome people to come visit the lab. And so the way we went about that is we benchmark ourselves with other laboratories that are positioned similarly to us in terms of what it is we're trying to manage at the laboratory. And we also work with our DWE stakeholders to put in place policies and procedures that are hopefully very efficient. And so coming out of COVID, we took a phased approach. So initially, we welcomed back just the employees, and then after a little while, our science community, and I'm happy to say, we now welcome back our neighbors and the public to visit the site. So both our east and west gates are open to public access and the road between them. So if you come visit us, you can also visit the Bison, you can visit the Letterman Science Center, which has a number of really great educational displays. We have hiking trails on the east and west side of the laboratory, so you can hike, you can bike, you can walk your dog. And I'm happy to say, we just recently restarted in-person our Saturday morning physics program, so I don't know how many people are familiar with that, but it's a great program for high school students. We bring them there every Saturday for 11 weeks, and they hear all of the science that we do at the laboratory. Now, if you come to the east or west gates and you want to get onsite, you need to show a real ID compliant form of identification. So this is a little bit more rigorous form of identification that's being rolled out across various federal facilities, including the laboratory. So specifically, what does that mean? That means either an enhanced driver's license or a passport, but you show either one of those two things, and you get access to all the things I mentioned on the previous slide. We have additional improvements that we're pursuing, so we're going to break ground this year on a new welcome and access center that'll be situated on the west side of the laboratory. It'll take us about a year to complete that, but once it's there, we'll be excited. It'll offer a smoother access process and other amenities. So if you're interested in keeping track either of site access or the science that we're doing, we invite you to follow either our newsletter, visit our website, look for news releases, or just have us come back here from time to time. So again, really excited to welcome science and our surrounding community to come visit us for, as I said, there's a number of things. And we have actually an event coming up this weekend that I'm going to invite Becky up to tell you a little bit more about.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Thompson. I'm Head of Education and Public Engagement at Fermilab, and we do have a huge event coming up this Sunday. From 1:00 to 4:00, we're having our outdoor fair again. And so I know maybe a number of you have gone in the past. We used to hold it in June, on a Sunday in June. We're now holding it this coming weekend. The weather looks beautiful, thank goodness. So please come out. We are asking for registration. If you go to ed.fnal.gov, you can register for a time slot, either 1:00 to 2:30 or 2:30 to 4:00. And one of the things, the way we have worked our security plan, real ID is not required. So registration is, but real ID is not. You'll be able to interact with some of our fun, hands-on activities. The Raptors will be there. Mr. Freeze is performing not one, but three shows, and he will be introduced by Director Mermanga. So please, please, please come out. We do have a cap on registration, but it should be an incredible event, and we're so excited to be able to throw our doors open to you on such a scale. I do want to mention a few more things that we do have going on. Field trips are up and running. If you would like your school to come visit Fermilab, we do have field trips going on with tours. Tours have been approved, and we're looking to restart public tours in the near future. So those of you that have enjoyed our Monday afternoon tours, we're looking at how we can restart that very soon. It is part of our field trip. The Letterman Science Center has undergone quite a few renovations during the pandemic. We have a number of new exhibits, including new exhibits on quantum science. So please come explore, even if you've been there a million times, there's a lot more going on. We have a makerspace. Please check the ed.fnal site for our makerspace programming that's ramping up. So we do have a lot going on. We have a lot to welcome the public back to, and please, please, please attend our open house, our outdoor fair this weekend. Thank you all very much.
I had a question. You mentioned that Wilson Hall will have improved access sometime, hopefully in 2024. Will parts of that be open to the public again?
Yes.
And which parts will that be?
It'll be the atrium, and is there more?
It'll be the ground floor, the first floor, the second floor, including the art gallery. So those will be the three floors that'll be open to the public.
Okay, no access to the 15th floor viewing area?
No, we're looking at that, but right now, that's not open.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other question?
I have a question also. Will fishing ever be allowed again out there?
Fishing isn't allowed at this time.
Okay.
As long as we're talking about Fermilab, I just, as the Mayor of Batavia, I'd just like to share an experience. It obviously gets out, you know, what Fermilab's doing, and so a few months back, I was invited by the Mayor of the City of Chicago to come into Chicago and participate in an announcement. So I get in there, and here stands Sam Skinner, who used to be the White House Chief of Staff. And he was waiting at the door for me because it was shortly after we had had the groundbreaking at Fermilab of the new accelerator, I guess I'll call it, that you're building. And what they wanted to do this day was, is that the City of Chicago wanted to announce that they had just entered into a deal to sell the Thompson Center to the Google folks from the computer world, and that that was going to bring with it 6,000 new jobs into the City of Chicago, and that out here in Batavia, and we have Mayor Shelkey here to verify, is what they use, that this is really happening, they're going to, Fermilab has just broken ground, and they had a groundbreaking that the mayor was at, and the governor came, and they're saying that their new accelerator addition will add about 2,200 new jobs to the region. So we're here today to announce that in the Chicago area, we've got over 8,000 jobs coming to us, and we may be the only area in the whole United States that can make that boast right now. So I just thought that was very interesting, that they were very much wanting to play into the idea of the number of new jobs and people that will be coming into the Fermi accelerator. So we're excited about it, and Fermilab has probably been one of the best neighbors that we've ever had as far as cooperation, support, mutual aid, sharing ideas, and I just can't say enough for how grand we were. I think many times myself, had Fermilab not been announced by Lyndon Johnson at the White House on December 16th, 1966, how different Batavia would probably be today had that not occurred. And I guess I would best describe it with, we'd be Naperville number two, and it would be, that whole campus out there would just be one development of any kind of land use, most of it, you know, people driving and doing all the good stuff. It would be Naperville all over again, and we'd have a continuous flow from Naperville over to Batavia with just solid activity. So now we have that, and Batavia's very fortunate to have 6,800 acres off the development rolls there. And now we've, to the west side, we've got the Kane County Forest Reserve has gone out along the area of Nelson's Lake Road and Main Street, and they've bought 1,631 acres for what they claim will be the largest forest preserve in Kane County. So Batavia is going to have a future that's going to have two large areas of open space, one on each side of the community, but each of them will probably bring with it a lot of visitors and jobs and other activities, so it's not been a real negative to Batavia, but it's been something that we've really been able to control and manage and put together and. been able to control and manage and put together and really make us shine as a community that knows how to do it and does the right thing. So again, I can't say enough for admiration for Fermilab and what you're doing here. So thanks for coming in tonight. All right, moving to item 10, we have the Batavia High School Environmental Science Student Presentation.
Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present to you guys today. I'm a senior at Batavia High School, and I'm also the president of Eco Club. This is Keaton Crosey. He is the vice president, and he will briefly share a few things about the objectives of our club and what projects we do and things like that.
The BHS Eco Club is a student organization that serves a, that serves a purpose of educating and creating awareness about the environment. These are just a few of the recent projects that we have done. The BHS courtyard that was constructed in a partnership with Aquascape in 2020, the native prairie seed collection, the Fox River cleanup, the arbor day tree, the tree plantings, and the Battle of the Brush. Thank you for allowing us to share some ideas with you guys today.
All right, thank you, Keaton. On behalf of the eco-passionate student body that forms our club, I'm here to share ideas to further promote the health of our environment in Batavia. I believe that it is a duty of my generation to be more aware about ecological problems that we have going today, because when the time comes that we're sitting in the seat you guys are, it's going to be a much bigger problem, and I don't want that to happen. I would like to briefly share with you a few things regarding the projects Keaton just mentioned. First, the Eco Courtyard at Batavia High School. We are very proud of our role in the design and construction of this self-sustaining ecosystem. I know many of you attended the ribbon and construction of this self-sustaining ecosystem. Oh, sorry about that. Along with all the generous community donors for this project. We are in the process of Phase 2, which is connecting the other side of the courtyard to the current side of the courtyard. This is an amazing student-created space that will continue to utilize as a place to study, serve as an outdoor classroom, and a place to connect with nature. The Eco Courtyard has also challenged our club to come up with conservation practices to better use rainwater. Now, I would like to discuss a few things that I think the city of Batavia could benefit to become more eco-friendly. First, lighting conservation efforts. LED lighting has been implemented into towns in every state across the country, whether that is in and around houses or the whole town itself. First and foremost, LED lighting is exceptionally energy efficient. When compared to general lighting methods, to traditional lighting methods, sorry, LEDs consume significantly less electricity. This reduced energy consumption directly translates to lower carbon emissions and decreased demand on power plants, ultimately helping to combat climate change and air pollution. Furthermore, LED lights have a longer lifespan. Also, LED lights are directionally, are directional and emit light precisely where it is needed. This feature minimizes light pollution, which is a significant environmental concern in big cities and the towns surrounding it. By reducing the dispersion of light into the night sky, LED street lighting helps protect our natural ecosystems. Finally, LED lights contain no hazardous materials such as mercury, which can be found in fluorescent lighting. This makes LED lighting safer to handle and dispose of, reducing potential harm to both humans and the environment. Second, more energy efficiency audits and upgrades of municipal offices and services, which include lighting audits, HVAC system audits, building envelope audits, appliance and equipment audits, and water efficiency audits. Third, environmental upgrades. Insulation and weatherization. Improving insulation and weatherization of municipal buildings to reduce heat gain or loss, making them more energy efficient. Solar panels, installing solar panels on municipal buildings to generate clean renewable energy, which can offset electricity costs and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Window and door upgrades, replacing old inefficient windows and doors with energy-efficient ones can enhance insulation and reduce drafts. Water efficiency improvements, installing low-flow toilets, faucets, and showerheads in municipal bathrooms, and fixing water leaks to reduce water consumption. In closing, many smaller communities like Batavia have retained traditional shopping streets at their core, downtown centers. Recently, many retailers who once fled the downtown have moved into, when they moved, when they fled the downtown, they moved into malls, big boxes, and strips, and they're now coming back. This is evident in our town, and today, the historic centers of our town offer wonderful options to build upon as they consolidate their new economic models. We want Batavia to be among those progressive communities that see these business opportunities and are able to help the environment by recycling buildings and infrastructure, prioritizing walkability, and by obviating increments of suburban sprawl that eat up the rural landscape and lengthening driving distances and consequent emissions. Once again, thank you for this opportunity to have BHS Eco Club share some ideas with you, and thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
It's not so much a question, but I did want to say thank you for coming out and presenting. It's exciting that you guys are being so active, even at such, especially at such a young age.
Yeah, absolutely. Like, this is really a great opportunity. I thank every single one of you for allowing me to get into a position like this. It's a great learning experience for someone young like me and Keaton, and I just really wanted to be appreciative of that. Thank you.
Have you, I guess this is a question. Have you gotten in contact with Batavia's environmental commission yet? I'm sure they'd love to have you guys be involved.
So I'm here with a club sponsor, who is a teacher at the school, Mrs. Fallhaber. Do you know the answer to that question?
We have not. That's a great idea.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would second that as well. I know in St. Charles, they have student ambassadors that join the commission meetings, so it would be great to have a student ambassador. And yeah, thank you for leading the club. Thank you for being a part of the club. They didn't have that kind of club when I was there. We weren't even allowed in that courtyard either, so we weren't.
Really?
Ever. So I'm really envious, and I think what a great experience. I'd really appreciate you coming down and sharing this. How many, how many folks are in the club?
So right now, we have about 40 to 50 members. In meetings, we traditionally get around 30 members, and we offer plenty of opportunities, like we're doing a seed cleanup on Thursday, and it's really a great way for kids to get involved with the environment around us so that we can be more aware about the problems that we face in the future.
See the interest in your club growing over the years?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So it, from last year, we improved club numbers by about 20%. And each year, the freshman class, it's just evident, there's so many people passionate about like being outside and stuff like that, making sure the environment's okay, and it's really a cool thing to watch, is I'm getting to my final stages.
One last question. What is the general mood of the club? Are you, are you overall hopeful? Are you, is it kind of eco-anxiety?
Yeah, it's definitely not anything, there's never any bad moods in that club. We just learn about, today we had a meeting, we learned about sustainable living and simple things like that. So there's no bad moods, it's all really good times. It's what I tried to make the club be as president, so yeah, essentially. Anything else?
One more thing. Thank you so much for coming here tonight. It is so inspiring to listen to you speak. I feel better about our future listening to people like you. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Thank you to your sponsor for.
Well, like the mayor said, we have great school system here, so.
Yeah, certainly on behalf of the city council, it's already been said, but I'd like to officially thank you for coming down and bringing forth your ideas. I think that there's a lot to be learned from the generations of the world all getting together and talking about how it used to be and what was wrong, and people of the younger generation stepping forward and saying, well, if you do this, 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 and this, you can make this a better world for everybody. So I think we've got that dialogue going, and I really would like to encourage you to invite other members of yourselves to come back down to city council meetings on a regular basis. If you've got any new ideas or new things you'd like to share, to please step forward, and we have a part on the agenda for any items on the, that are not on the agenda for people to speak. So just come over and whisper in my ear that you're here to say something, and I'll be more than happy to recognize you and let you come forward. So thank you for what you're doing.
Absolutely.
So good. Okay, we will move then to item number 11 on our agenda, which is approval of video gaming for JT's Tavern and Tap at 113 South Batavia Avenue. Who's got this one? Alderman Chanet, do you have this, or?
This is for the city service, I will take this though. We reviewed the application for JT's Tavern and Tap located at 113 South Batavia Avenue. After discussion regarding video gaming, your honor broke the tie, sending this back to city council with a positive recommendation. The police department conducted their investigation and determined that there was no reason to not give a license. And we spoke on the merits of video gaming, which is something we probably need to discuss in committee, because ultimately, the committee agreed that this is a wonderful fix for a troubled property, and we are all excited for what's coming here. And we invited the applicants to come in to talk about what great things are happening at this space.
All right. You want to make a motion, or what?
I would, I would make a motion that we approve the video gaming license for JT's Tavern and Tap.
No, second. Alderman Chanet, second bar on sofa, for the approval of the gaming license for JT's Tavern and Tap at 113 South Batavia Avenue. Any discussion?
I would like to point out one thing, if I could, and that would be, anybody who votes no against this and still claims they're pro-business are complete hypocrites. This is, all this is, is a way for this business to make some supplemental income. They were very candid last week that they would not have even done this project with the understanding, if they were not going to get the video gaming, simply because of the size of the business. They put a ton of money into this place, and I just was almost sick to my stomach last week, listening to people claim they're pro-business and then vote no against video gaming. We are not the morality police here. If you're pro-business, you vote yes for this. If not, I don't want to ever hear you say you're pro-business again. That's number one. Number two, it's the situation where video gaming is not the main port of this business or any other business that's come through asking for these video games in town. Again, it's simply supplemental, and to think that because you're not going to allow some video game machines in a place such as JT's is going to change anything. If people can just walk down the street to Shell and buy $100 of scratch tickets if they want to, it's the same thing. Also, it's, it's, it would be like the situation where we have liquor licenses in town. Again, there's liquor licenses for businesses all over, for liquor stores, and I just don't understand the whole morality thing about trying to deny a business income when they've actually pretty much expressly said they wouldn't even have done this if they were to have known that this was going to happen. So again, a vote no means you are not pro-business in this town.
All right, who would like to speak next? Alderman Chanet?
As I mentioned in committee, I regret my yes vote in inviting video gaming into our town. I know that we did not have to do that. We heard hours of testimony regarding this being the crack of the gaming industry. It is a very difficult thing for someone who is chemically predispositioned to gaming. That said, the organizations and companies in town that do have these have done a very good job of maintaining them. The issue at hand is the proliferation and the feeling that the downtown looks more like Las Vegas, flashing lights, with an element that we didn't envision, and additional machines. While keeping the debate respectful of each other and differing points of views, while I do regret my vote to invite this into town, I do recognize that there are tasteful ways to do this, and this is definitely something to discuss at the committee level, because there is a growing faction of council members who seem to not support the concept of video gaming. But it is the law of the land, and so you are right. We do need to support anyone who meets the requirements of this. A ceremonial no vote is not someone who is anti-business. A ceremonial no vote is someone who's speaking with conviction and recognizes that it's possible that we might have made a mistake inviting this idea into town. And again, as I said, JT's Tavern seems to have invested a lot of money into this building. I've never been inside it. I've only seen video surveillance of a bar fight. I've seen inside when they were bringing in new finishes and investment in what's going to be an amazing restaurant. And there will be no signage from the street. You will not be able to tell that the gaming equipment is even inside. So of all the ways to execute on this, this is probably a model way to do it. But this is definitely something to discuss at committee and in a respectful way. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that as, I will second that, please bringing it back to a future or a very near future committee meeting to talk about a cap, because this is a true bummer of a way for a business to open in our town. I do not want JT's to open amid a mixed vote. I don't want any future business to open amid a split council. But our council is split, our town is split, and it is not a anti-business move to use a ceremonial no vote. It is in regards to the fact that we would like a mix of businesses in our town, and right now, the direction that it's going is that there is not a mix that is leaning very heavily towards only having establishments that have gaming. And I don't want to look like a town to an outsider that looks like they can't support a restaurant unless it has gaming, and restaurants can't make it here in Batavia unless it has gaming, and I, I don't want to look like that town. I want a healthier mix. I don't think we have a healthy mix right now, and this is not a discussion to have when discussing JT's Tavern, because I do believe that they will operate and run a very positive, vast improvement for that block, and I'm very excited for them. But those of us that have stood on this side and have stood on the side of not wanting to see this proliferate, we're going to keep sending that message, and we need to have that conversation back in committee.
Anybody else? Alderman?
Thank you, your honor. So I wrote up some notes earlier this week as I was pondering this from our committee meeting, and I will say that my thoughts are, have to do with JT's coming to town and from discussing with other community members, and I agree with Alderman Chanet that I, I hope that around this table, we keep it respectful, our conversation with each other. This is about a topic, and it's not about individuals, and so to, just to encourage that we have positive discussions over all of our topics. But at our committee of the whole meeting last week, I voted no on this item, and I expressed that it has nothing against JT's, but primarily my concern with not wanting to see video gaming expanded specifically in our downtown. But I do realize that JT's came to town with the full understanding that they would be able to continue with the video gaming license that the previous business had. They had that license. You guys are investing incredible money into that block, into our downtown, which I appreciate. We're seeing a great revitalization in that area, and I mean, the Eco Club just spoke about that, taking our historical buildings and revitalizing that, and that is what you are doing, and I appreciate that, and excited to see what you're bringing. My overall concern with this particular situation is not a morality concern, but it is a desired balance with our strategic planning in our downtown, and I agree that this needs to go to committee for us to discuss further. But I will be voting yes tonight for you guys, because I think you are bringing something good, and you came to town with the understanding that this is what, this was your expectation. So I will be voting yes tonight. But just want to make it clear, my yes vote for JT's and also for the Moose Lodge does not still express my overall concern with continued proliferation of gaming in our downtown.
Anybody else?
I won't repeat what's been said since, everybody's kind of said exactly what I feel, but I would note that a no vote here, you can look at my record, I've been pro-business since day one on this council, so my no vote. since day one on this council, so my no vote does not make me a hypocrite. I'm still pro-business. This is just my stance that I've had from day one, everybody knows that, so.
I was not here during the committee meeting, but, you know, I've been pretty pro-supportive of this from the beginning. I think this is just one more tool that the businesses, you know, have been allowed in our town. akin to having a lottery ticket sales outlet, and a gas station, or, you know, convenience store, this is just another thing that's out there. And if we want to start having discussions about what we want to allow, whether it be gaming, or alcohol, or tobacco, or anything else that's a vice, that's somebody's personal decision to make. I believe that that's where we have to leave that, and, you know, this is part of us doing what's within our rights, according to the state law that's out there, and, you know, I felt firmly from the beginning, I would love to see somebody around this table tell me, each and every one of the businesses that has and doesn't have that license, go in and ask the owners that have it, have they lost business because they have gaming in their building? I doubt it. If anything, I'm sure it's helped them survive, you know, some of them even thrive because of it, and I have yet to be in one of the businesses that has it, and seen the same people sitting at the same machine, playing night after night, or week after week. I just don't hear those stories from the business owners. Now, when these things are set up in a gas station, or in, you know, a strip mall, I've watched many videos of that, and yes, it is very addictive to people, and I just don't think that we have that issue, the way they are used, and the businesses that they're used in town. And I don't think that we are beyond where we started in number of total machines, because we've had licenses that have been turned in and have not been reissued. So I don't think we're proliferating this and going beyond where we are. Staff could correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I think we're still below where we were at a max. So, that being said, I think this is a good decision for this business. I think it's a good decision for our town. I don't think it's abused. I don't think we've had abuse of it in town, and if, you know, that's where we want to go at some point, we'll have to be able to bring up enough support to change it.
Any else?
Very quick. I am voting yes because of the significant investment made in this property. I am very excited about what is coming to that space. After, as was aforementioned, the issues that were there, you were absolutely under the impression that it would carry over. I respect that. I don't, I'm hesitant for expansion of gaming in general, and I support a future respectful conversation on the topic at a later time.
Mr. May seem kind of out of left field. These machines, are they going to have seating, or are they going to be standing machines?
I believe you have to have seating.
Okay.
Can you have a machine?
You have, but they will do have seating. You have seats in front of them.
Interesting. Thank you.
You don't stand up when you go all in?
I would like to conclude this conversation with just a brief history lesson. When I was first elected mayor of Batavia in 1981, there was a couple trouble spots in downtown, and this location where these gentlemen are proposing to open was one of the trouble spots. And I believe within two or three months of my taking office, I shut them down because they served a minor. And then they had some other issues, and then that owner left, and a new owner came in, and he had more issues than the previous one had had, and this has been kind of an ongoing, rolling, rough road over there for a long, long time. And I know, in talking to the members of the Batavia Police Department, which I do quite frequently, till rather recently, that was always kind of one of the problem childs, problem child in downtown Batavia was that location. And I think, you know, there was many a call there, probably maybe the number one spot in the downtown, as far as what was going on there. So this went on, and on, and on, and on, until rather recently, and then we had some things happen, and we had new ownership. So then the gentlemen who were sitting in the front row showed up, and I talked with them, and then after they had left, I got on the phone and called some folks I know over in DuPage County, and asked some questions about these guys, and everything that's been said here about how good they run something was verified to me by others in official positions in DuPage County, that these aren't guys that let the place go down the tubes. They are there to run a very respectable and honest restaurant. I had one person tell me, well, I bet you there'll be a whole bunch of older people that you never saw in a tavern before, will be in there wanting to sit there, because this is going to be like a coffee shop. So that's the reason I'm, I'm a proponent of, I don't necessarily buy, as you know, I'm kind of strong in my antics about people running away with liquor licenses, and abusing them, and whatever have you. I'm not anticipating, I'd be very surprised if this one does, and given the fact that they've already gone in there and done a miraculous change of appearance in the place, and made it much more inviting, and to people to come in, I just want to make sure that we hold on to these guys, and that we get them a chance to really make downtown Batavia shine, at a spot that used to be a blemish. And, and now I think we got a smile on it. So that's why I would encourage us to vote for it. That being said, I guess no further comments. Kirk, call the roll.
Lancy?
Hi.
Beck?
No.
Piper?
No.
Solfah?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Chanset?
No.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
No.
Uwer?
No.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Five?
Vote is eight yes, five no?
Yep.
Motion's approved. Welcome to Batavia.
Any, any idea when you're going to be open?
Since the applicant is here, and they're on TV, did possible, let me just talk very briefly about the business. Can we invite them on? We can give you a couple minutes. I'd ask the question, at the risk of sounding like a paid spokesperson, you had recommended the garlic wings. I just want to make sure that nothing has changed since our committee meeting.
When was that meeting? Six, seven days ago?
It is the garlic wings, though.
I'll answer it with, they've gotten even better since the last time you've asked that question. So, first of all, thank you guys very much. I guess I'll start off with saying, like I did the last meeting, you know, we're a family-run operation. We've owned JT's Porch and Lombard for 12 years. We've owned JT's Corner Tap and Carroll Stream for seven. This is my brother, Justin, my father, Bob. We support our families with these now three businesses, and we are known for excellent food, a great atmosphere, and like I said, and I'll stand by this, from what I said before, is, you know, you can go anywhere to get a drink, but what keeps people coming back is the food. And I'll stand by that. That's something that we, it's a mantra that we run our business by. Like my father had said, you know, we get to know every single customer that walks into our place, and we treat them like family, and I think by doing that, they have the same respect for us when they walk in our building. And I think that's what that previous business lacked. You know, the more you know, and the more you get to know people, the more respect they have of you, and we're not absentee owners. We are, we are consistently there. You can ask our wives, they, they probably don't see us as much as they would like, but we, we provide for our families based on these three businesses, and we'll, we'll continue to do so. So with that, that is JT's, and we're really looking forward to, to come into the neighborhood. So, yes, sir.
What year did you establish yourself?
When?
What year?
2011.
Okay.
We bought the business November of 2011, JT's Porch, and then we expanded into our second location, six years later, five, six years later, on that exact date. We bought November 1, 2011. We opened up JT's Corner Tap November 1 of 2017, and our hopes are to open up JT's, yeah. We would have liked to open earlier, but I think the, you know, this is, this is what's going to happen, so. Jeff, yeah.
Following up on the wings question?
Yes, sir.
We also, will you also have chicken tenders, that kind of thing?
Yeah, we'll have, we're actually, one of our most popular sellers is boneless wings, so, not your traditional frozen boneless wing. Everything's hand-breaded to order. They, you know, we offer all of our different sauces along with those as well, so.
Maybe it's needed, something like that, and it's downtown for quite a while now.
Well, you, you come in when we're open, and we'll make sure that, we'll make sure you get those.
Don't skip out on the burger.
Oh, no, that's, that's, I mean, that's the other thing, it's wings and burgers. Eight-ounce fresh-packed patty, no frozen, no frozen stuff going on there, so. We take pride in what we do, so, and it shows, it shows on the menu, and it shows the way that we conduct the business.
If I may just say, when we came to the city prior to buying the business, we asked for a meeting with the mayor, and anyone who you felt should attend that meeting. The place before us had a very bad reputation. I wasn't sure I wanted to put my family in that situation, and we made a commitment to you, to the city, during that meeting, okay, that, I've heard exactly what you said last week, but it's not going to be the blemish on the rear end of Batavia, okay? It will not be. We've lived up to everything we've said we were going to do to this point, and well beyond, okay? The building, we kept stripping layers as we found stuff, meeting with the Historical Society, preservation, okay? It's been a blast, it's been fun. I don't mind investing my money, okay, in your town. In fact, I've got another property in your town that I'm going to purchase. A bid was accepted, and I think I'll move forward now, okay, with that property, okay, for another business in your town, okay? We made promises, we kept those promises. There's promises that we made also, that until we open, you won't know that we will keep them, but we're going to keep those next to the police department, okay? The first call the police department is going to get from our restaurant is from us, the owners, okay? You're not going to get it from the community, okay? You're not going to get it from my neighbors. I've met all my neighbors, they all like us, they all understand what we want to do, and we will live up to that. We have lives, we don't want to be there with the police at 1:00 in the morning, or 2:00 in the morning, we don't want our neighbors going through that, that they've gone through for years. So you have our commitment still, okay, that, that blemish is gone, okay, and it will remain gone, okay? So, thank you all. All right, we do appreciate each and every one of you guys.
Welcome to Batavia.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
All right, moving to item 12 on the agenda, which is ordinance 2344, an ordinance authorizing the city of Batavia, Kane, and DuPage County, Illinois, to issue waterworks revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $2,100,000 in evidence of loans issued pursuant to the public water supply loan program. Who's got this one? Alderman Chanset?
So we're not actually issuing bonds at this point, this is a perfunctory move. We have to approve this ordinance in order to move the next step in the application process for issuing the, our revenue bonds. So I would move that we approve ordinance 23-44, so we can move this process along, and take advantage of low-interest loans through the state of Illinois.
Second. Move by Alderman Chanset, Second Baldwin Wolf, for the approval of ordinance 2344. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Piper?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Approved. All right, moving to 13, which is ordinance 23-48, 2024 wage and salaries for non-collectively bargained employees. Wendy?
We talked about this last week at the COW. Based on some economic indicators and review of the current climate, staff is recommending a 3.5% increase for non-union collective bargaining in 2024. The attached ordinance reflects that. Just a couple changes, or changes that were noted. There is going to be a proposed change to the job title for the water and sewer maintenance worker to water and sewer utility operator, just a reflection of the job duties and comparables within the market. Same with the crew leader position would be changed to senior water and sewer utility operator. Addition of the electric superintendent position, and this was part of, if you may recall, part of the succession planning of that department, which will then remove, will move the current assistant electric superintendent to that position, but then remove the assistant electric superintendent position off of the wage ordinance. And then removal of any language related to the battalion chief, the holiday pay, as well as them listed in the stipend. As you may recall, we are currently under negotiations, they are considered part of IFF's agreement right now. And then the last thing that actually is in addition, since we talked last week, is that there is an added position, senior accountant position. As you may recall, this position was approved through the budget process to add an additional position in the finance department, and after review of creation of the job description since last week, and review of the comps, this position is budgeted for this year, and it's placed in pay grade 14. And hopefully, we'll be able to begin recruitment right away.
Questions, Wendy? Somebody care to make a motion?
So moved.
Move by Alderman Solfah, Second Baldwin Wolf, for the approval of ordinance 2348, 2024 wage and salaries for non-collectively bargained employees. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Piper?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Moving then to item 14, ordinance 2349, regulating the 2024 salaries and wages for paid-on-call members of the fire department.
So the paid-on-call fire department members are listed in a separate ordinance, so that's what this ordinance is attached. It's the same recommendation of 3.5%. You'll see the changes specifically in their hourly wage, and then in that dollar allotment that they use for the points they collect, that amount, budgeted amount is also increased 3.5%. So you'll see those changes reflected in the ordinance.
Any questions? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Solfah, Second by Wolf, for the approval of ordinance 2349, regulating 2024 salaries and wages for paid-on-call members of the fire department. Any further questions? Kirk, call the roll.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Piper?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to item 15, which is ordinance 23-50, amending the 2024 payment for ESDA volunteer members. Wendy?
This is the last ordinance for the 2024 budgeted salaries. This is just a reflection of the ESDA manager pay position would be increased by 3.5%, so you'll see that reflected in the ordinance itself. All other items remain the same. So you'll see that reflected in the ordinance itself. All other items remain the same.
Questions? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sulfah, second by Wolf for the approval of ordinance 2350. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Piper?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Motion's approved. All right, thank you, Wendy. Moving to 16, the Main Street Minute. And we have the executive director here to give us a report.
Hi. I'm just going to start with our upcoming events. I mentioned last week, last time I was here, that Bat Fest is coming up. That's on October 28. That'll be our last big outdoor event for the season. It's 10 to 2 on the 28th and Saturday, the 28th. That's also the last day of the outdoor farmer's market. There's going to be lots of fun stuff going on, so bring your families down. Live bat meet and greet and a reptile show as well as lots of fun and games. The indoor market moves to its new, well, we're going to be at the dock because grain allergy isn't quite done yet, so it'll be at the dock at 151st Street until that's done. The grain allergy guys are hoping end of November, so we're optimistic about that. We have our holiday sneak peek, which is on November 9 from 5 to 8. We have 15-plus businesses participating in that, plus the boardwalk shops, so we're really excited. There'll be complimentary sweets and savory snacks, tea tasting, different kinds of drinks, make and takes around town, so it'll be a nice way to kick off the holiday season. Again, that's November 9 from 5 to 8 p.m. And then that's followed by Winterfest Art Market that Friday, Saturday, Sunday, the 10th through the 11th. And then the boardwalk shops continue to reopen. We have one new business that we'll be welcoming to downtown, U+ Medical Esthetician. And they're at 106 West Wilson Street on the lower level, number three. And that's about all I have. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you. Thank you for your continued good job.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, 17, the administrator's report.
Good evening. Just a few things to share. The plan commission is going to be meeting on November 1. And on the agenda are facade changes to the Laurin Apartments on North Avenue, conditional use for video gaming at the proposed overflow facility at 144 West Wilson Street, and conditional use for internet car sales for a relocated business in our industrial park called Banaba Automotive at 1805 Phelps Drive. We are going to be scheduling an involuntary annexation review of several old railroad parcels that are north of Millview Drive for the November 14th committee of the whole meeting. In the fire department, I want to congratulate them on a wonderful open house this past Saturday. They said they had record numbers of folks who came out to the open house and that despite the weather, they really had a nice turnout. So congratulations to them on that. And we have had one paid-on-call recruit complete their shift qualification test. On Tuesday, October 10, the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners extended a conditional offer of employment to three experienced lateral candidates. And so we were just waiting for them to go through their final testing and hopefully we'll have three new members of our police department. And the great thing when they come to us laterally is that we don't have to send them away for school. They just simply have to go through their field operations training and then they are able to be out on duty for us. So that was a nice find in those three candidates. The board will also be interviewing four additional candidates at their meeting on November 7. We're currently looking to fill six open positions on the police department. So it's been a situation where we've had a really difficult time with a lot of people working a lot of overtime and we're looking forward to filling these positions so that people can get back to a more regular schedule. And the police department also thank you for participating in the fire department open house this past week. It made an even better event for our community. And on Thursday, November 16, at the request of Kathleen Tiriton, who in addition to being a phenomenal arts teacher at the high school, is also the staff liaison to their LGBTQ organization within the high school for students. And on Thursday, November 16, the Batavia Police Department will be participating in the Batavia High School Pride Alliance, BHS Pride Fest. In public works, final engineering is underway for the Carriage Crest Drainage Improvements Project. We've received 50% plans to review in the coming days. And the traffic signal underground conduits and foundations are being completed for the North River Street conversion to One Way. The next step will be replacement of the concrete for curb and gutter. And the city of Batavia is installing a veterans parking sign at the new Flag Day Memorial prior to the start of leaf collection season. We're just also looking into whether we can put some type of limited mobility space over there. Unfortunately, the space that's closest to the monument, closest to the sidewalk, has a grade that would be not compliant with ADA regulations. So we're seeing if we can do something else in that regard. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me?
Questions are?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. We have other business from the city council? Alderman Chanset?
I don't have a date to the prom, or not the prom, the Pride Festival. If you'd be my date again, I would love it, walking down senior hall with you at the Pride Festival at the high school. It was a great show of support for the students. When members of the city council were there, a lot of the students came up to us and had questions about city-related matters. So if you're not doing anything that day, I don't want to go stag. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody else? All right, going to the mayor's report, I'm going to be kind of quick. Number one, I had the opportunity, I had to go to the homestead today for a brief, drop something off to a resident who called and wanted something. So I went up to the room and came back down and while I was up there, word got out in the lobby that I was in the building. And within about two or three minutes, that, these guys must have run to get down there to me, but I got met at the side door and they just wanted to express to me their dismay that last Friday night, they could not listen, watch the Batavia football game on TV.
I'm going to have to make it a point to go up there and find somebody in their technology department or something so that they can have a way to webcast to a TV there. So at least in their one room, they could watch it.
Well, let me just say.
I watched it on my phone coming back, sitting out at O'Hare from runway 26 West. It took us 25 minutes to get into a gate and I watched it on my phone. I couldn't stand the Wheaton call, but I at least watched it.
Alderman Wolf and his partner, Mr. Lundberg, they got a big fan club up there. And I mean, quite honestly, if you listen to these guys, you'd think that they've been doing it for a long time and they're perfect, like WGN guys, you know, they studied the feet of Jack Rickhouse.
Almost 20 years.
Yeah, whatever. I'm just saying that we've got a great thing going with you and I just want you to know how, you know, these guys were seriously disappointed because they said they've got a whole fan club of Batavia fans there. Now they've lived in all these other towns and they all come on Friday night or Saturday, whenever it is, with their cup of coffee or their beer and they go into this place and they got a screen that's up and they sit there and they know the players and they know the two announcers and they just can't say enough about how.
Need someone to get them a Roku and teach them how to cast it on YouTube. One of the problems is sometimes we don't know that till the week of, whether or not we have rights to go broadcast it. And then at that point, you have to figure out how you can get somebody to be technologically advanced enough to be able to do that. I mean, my in-laws watched it down in North Carolina on the beach. They were there watching on my father-in-law's phone. So he's 90, so I know I can do it. Couple clicks. Right. It's just, we have to have that set up so that way we know they get taken care of. I know there's other places where people meet and they have, you know, specific places they go and they get their one TV in the restaurant. I know just about every place downtown has been broadcasting games because we've been over 1,000 views pretty much every week we broadcast.
So I got involved in this conversation about Alderman Wolf at the homestead. Well, they just wanted to express their dismay that it didn't work and they miss you very much. But then they, these guys, all four of them told me that they were not Batavia residents to begin with, but they got into the homestead and they moved in here. And several of them use the word blessed, that they were in the city of Batavia because this reminds them of these, one guy said, this small town in Minnesota that I grew up in 75 years ago, this was just like that. And it's not the modern things, it's the attitude of the people and the friendliness of the community and the commitment toward church and school and all the other stuff that makes up a community. And you don't find that in a lot of towns, but you find it right here in Batavia. So I think we should all take a bow of appreciation for what you've done as far as making this city one that people want to move into and live in. And I think it's illustrated by the fact that in talking to the development slash real estate world, and as you know, I work within that, right now to buy a house in Batavia is almost becoming a very problematic situation only because they're all the ones that are there have been bought by somebody and everybody wants to get in here. And so it's driven the price up and it's done a lot of different stuff. But I've had people say, well, I see what you're doing out there in McKee Street, but why can't you do it a couple of other places? And I say, well, you know, there's not much left to grow on, but maybe it's a little bit. But there's a lot of people that really think we're doing a great job here. And I just thought it was time to maybe let each of you have a pat on the back for what you've done here to make this town a very attractive place, specifically people with families or people with elderly parents or whatever, and you can bring them together and they can, the family can live here as separated but together. And it's small-town America with all the modernization and updating that you can expect. And they just can't say enough about the police and the fire department and the good maintenance on the streets when it snows. And I heard all the good stuff today. And so I said, well, they said, we really appreciate what this city's doing for us. So I just wanted you all to hear that, that there's people that really think we're doing. And you know, I go home at night and I turn on the TV to watch the 10 o'clock news. And oh my goodness gracious, I mean, every, every channel is about, first 10 stories are about some shooting or robbery or whatever's going on. And I mean, you don't have to go very far away from us that you run into some pretty violent situations. And it's, it's every night. I mean, and it's, it's not, you know, it's a real, it's a real sad situation. You want to make a comment?
I want to apologize on behalf of the third ward. For the last 12 years, the counterpart and I would visit the homestead once every six months. We change batteries on remotes. We, it's called Coffee with an Alderbin. We sit down with everybody and we'll talk about whatever anybody wants to talk about and put them in touch with their resources. That reminds me, we should probably visit them again. It's been well over a year since we've been there. So thank you. And good news for them too is the high school kids that have been doing the huddle broadcast within the school, they will be doing basketball this year. They're doing volleyball and all the other sports too. They've got a bunch of crew that they've put together and Dennis is kind of funding, I think through the athletic department, they're going to fund somebody to try to manage that so that they can provide more of that out there. Then we just have to figure out how we can get people to watch it.
Well, Coach Dennis called me this afternoon and he originally wanted to bring another group down here tonight that they wanted to talk to us or wanted to tell us about. But now we're going to wait to two weeks from now and they're coming down to talk.
I think we should also talk to the middle school. I saw that the middle school cross-country team, I think, was.
We did that Saturday night with escort from the fire and police departments. So I would just suggest that, you know, I talked to a lot of other mayors in the area and they don't have this good stuff going. I mean, we really, I don't want to brag about it or sound like we're boasting, but I mean, we got some good stuff going here. And I really appreciate what it is they're going to do. So. Our last football game of the season before we get into it is Friday night.
It will be broadcast.
It will be broadcast. And I talked to Dennis, that we're going to do something a little special at that one too. So we'll let it be a surprise to everybody, but we got good things going on here. So. All right, I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Moved by Wolf, second by Sulfah for counsel. And then our executive session, would Kirk call the roll?
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Piper?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Okay, let's take about a three-minute break and then we'll convene a day.